Please come to order this the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Union Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As you can tell, we're meeting for the first time in 14 months, since March of 2020. I joked that the Gallow was like a long lost friend I hadn't seen in a while. The votes for the election have been in the interest of currently underway governmental disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, we are meeting outside tonight in front of Village Hall instead of inside Village Hall. And I now ask you to explain the logistics that we're using tonight and to talk about our path forward towards returning to the board's new in-person meeting arrangements.
All right. Thank you, President Polanski. So the reason we're outside tonight is to ensure that we're in compliance with Governor Pritzker's emergency order regarding COVID-19. We're aiming to be outside, spaced out like we are at our tables without masks due to his most recent update involving vaccinated individuals of which every member up here on the board and myself are. As we move forward here into June, we are working to move back to fully in-person meetings inside our council chambers. Right now, we've set a target date for the first Village Board meeting of June 22nd. That is subject to the status of the Governor's executive order, the status of the pandemic in our area, and we'll be working before that or after that as we can to get in person quickly, but also safely. And if we do move to Phase Five on June 11th, which is the current indication from the Governor, we may be able to have other Board and Commission meetings or committee meetings in person earlier than June 22nd. So we'll be sure to keep the community and the board updated as we progress.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. In addition, the meeting outside tonight is an evening meeting that there will be two Village Board meetings this evening. This meeting is the final meeting and our Board of Trustees currently seated here. The agenda for this meeting is limited to the approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, announcing the results of the April 6th election, acknowledging our retirement members of the board, and then the strength of the oath of office to our newly-elected members of the board. After this meeting concludes, we will recess and seat the new Village Board, including our new Village President, Senta Plunkett, and the new Board will conduct its first meeting with a normal agenda of business. As usual, we'll call the members of the Board which they appear on the agenda, and there are copies of the hard copies of the agenda right there. Mr. Skiles has them if anyone wants a copy. So for one last time, I'll give the instructions to those members of the public who wish to address the board this evening. These instructions will also apply to not only this meeting, but the next meeting just to be a little more efficient. So if you plan to address us tonight at either the first or second meeting, we ask you, please come up to the microphone. This is the microphone, right, that they'll be using?
Correct.
So please come up to the microphone, speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly in the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything we say is being recorded, the members of the meeting are prepared. These meetings are available both at Village Hall and hard copy phone and also on our website at willmet.com. Also, our Village Board meetings include this outdoor meeting. I'll televise on local access channel six, and I'll give you the URL. It's our YouTube Live site, www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. And there's no dashes or dots or anything like that. Lately, we have found that channel six is showing its age and our equipment is showing its age. So for those of you who do tune into channel six, you can expect a clearer picture into your future. Now, we televise in meetings to meetings for members of the Village Board to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and local government meetings on our YouTube site. And I'd love to personally point out one time all the residents of Willmet who tour regularly to channel six and pay attention to the workings of their local government. If you want to see the packet of agenda materials, these materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and interested parties can view the very same materials which Board members receive. Because of the short agenda for the first meeting tonight, that packet only contained 32 pages. Finally, we are community members, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible. So as a courtesy to those around here, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices, and while we turn off our phones, would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Sullivan?
Yeah.
Trustee Barrow?
Here.
Trustee Dad?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
And President Polanski?
Here. We had a time mix-up. I believe Trustee Kennedy will be joining us, but she suggested that we start without her. So we do have a call on six and seven minutes. The next item is item two, public comment. During public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda. As I mentioned, we have two meetings tonight with the second one taken on the agenda. So if Congress members are interested in addressing the Board, I would suggest that we take the second meeting to address the new Board as opposed to addressing the level of Board. But all that said, if there is any items who would like to speak and address this Board, which is not on the agenda, may I see a show of hands? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. As described on the previous agenda, items two and three debated by the Village Board are placed on the consent agenda. For the first meeting, the consent agenda consists only of items 3.1, which is approved at our last Board meeting. So if I can load your items 3.1, my consent agenda, may I see a show of hands? Okay, and would any of the trustees like to move in debate? Item 3.1, the minutes from our last meeting. Okay, seeing none, may I have permission to adopt the consent agenda? So that was Trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Burton. So if we move to second meeting, would the clerk please call the roll and motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dad?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
And President Polanski?
Aye. So the consent agenda has been adopted. Item four is the report of officers. I do have some final remarks that I would like to share, but I will wait until the end of item 6.3 for that. And I believe the American Village Manager Corporation Council will take place during the second meeting tonight. Okay. So moving on to item five, which is the standing committee reports. There are no reports from any of our standing committees tonight, but if you have a bunch, we are going to have each of the Board one final time. So we start with Trustee Barrow. No report, Mr. President. The founding committee has no report this evening. The real instruction, what do you think, Trustee Don?
No report.
Municipal Services, Trustee Sullivan, no report. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman, report. And Judicial Committee, President-elect Plunkett?
No report.
All right. So that's the standing committee reports. Now we move on to item six, which is business pertaining to the April 6th, 2021 consolidated election. First item is item 6.1, announcement of official certificate of results of the April 6th, 2021 consolidated general election. And I will turn that over to our Village Manager, Mr. Berman.
Thank you, President Polanski. The Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes cast for president of the village of Willmet, has certified the following vote totals. I will read the names in the order in which they appeared on the ballot. Senta Plunkett, 3,077 votes. Joel Kersman, 2,169 votes. This election having been certified by the Cook County Clerk, the elected results being Senta Plunkett elected Village President. For the Office of Village Trustee, the Cook County Clerk has completed a canvas of all votes cast for trustee, village of Willmet, and has certified the following vote totals. I will read the names and votes in the order in which they appeared on the ballot. Peter H. Barrow, 2,810. Justin Shepard, 3,056. Kate Jaya, 3,002. Kathy Dodd, 3,197. Brian Locke, 1,248. This election having been certified by the Cook County Clerk with the results being Justin Shepard, Kate Jaya, and Kathy Dodd as elected.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. I will move on to item 6.2, acknowledgement of the retirement of trustee Joel Kersman. As is our tradition, we will open the floor to members of the Board to congratulate and make some comments. And then Trustee Kersman, the floor will be yours for any final comments that you'd like to make. So I'll just kick it off briefly here. But first off, I want to thank Trustee Kersman for his service over the past four years. Joel has worked on the Village Board and brought his own perspective to our work and our deliberations in our debate. He has been an advocate for increased infrastructure and our increased investment in infrastructure. And as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, he led a number of community conversations during his tenure, and also served as a representative to Red Center, which is our fire dispatch consortium among the communities in the area. While Trustee Kersman and I did not agree on issues that were on the Board, I have never doubted the sincerity of his beliefs or his views. So I once again thank Trustee Kersman for his service to our community, and I wish him well. So I'm now opening the floor to others who would like to comment.
I'll go first. Yeah. No, I would echo President Polanski's comment. Trustee, or Joel, I'll call you as you were lighting up here, but I've always been impressed for your passion for this and your diligence, and you really found an issue and you got behind it. And there was no question that you were committed to the residents, the village. You worked hard, and it was a great four years, and I've enjoyed working with you. So congrats. Thank you. But you made a difference. And good job.
Thank you.
Don't be shy. Go right ahead. Let's see, Trustee Barrow stepping in.
I would say first, Joel, that you were one of the first trustees to reach out to me after I was elected to the Board. We were in a pub crawl in downtown Willmet together on a warm, wonderful spring night, got a chance to catch up with one another, to learn what was important to each other for being a trustee. And I've always appreciated that very personal gesture that you made. You've been an important voice during the survival on the Board, largely for the minimum wage issue and for the stormwater issue and for the gun safety issue. And your engagement in all of those has been appreciated by all of us on the Board and I know all of us in the community. So thank you for your contributions. This isn't an easy job, and it doesn't pay very well. And I really appreciate all the work that you put into it. I've always learned when you spoke about whatever the topic was, and your voice has been an important one. So thank you.
Thank you.
Joel, or Trustee Kersman, I guess, for the last time, who knows? But I would echo what everybody else has said. Thank you so much for serving on our Board. I think I said this to you a couple of months ago, but I would repeat it, which is you brought a very important voice to the Board and one that we're going to really miss. And I mean that from my heart. I had an opportunity to listen to your views and the things that were important to you. And like President Polanski said, those issues that were important to you, you brought with a lot of passion. So I believe you helped all of us as a Board better understand the issues that were important to you and to all members of the community. And so I hope that we can learn from those. And while we will miss you, I hope that you will see us take some of those issues to light and continue to move some of your efforts forward. Thanks again. Good luck to you, and we'll really miss you.
Thank you.
When preparing remarks about Joel, I found it easy to start, but hard to know when to stop. What I first came to admire about Joel was his passion. He was always passionate about reaching a thorough understanding of any situation, getting the right answer or finding the right solution. And once he had decided what needed to be done, about seeing his plans through to completion, he was dogged in the very best sense of that word, persistent and untiring. The second thing that I admire about Joel is his dedication to finding out what residents think, what they need, and what they want. He has reached out to members of the community rather than waiting for them to come to him. He will talk to anyone, and if he could manage it, I think he'd talk to everyone. We all have a circle of friends, neighbors, and acquaintances from whom we gain intelligence and whose opinions shape our own. But Joel's circle is enormous, and it encompasses a wider and more diverse group of residents than any of ours, in my opinion. I will miss being able to tap into Joel's knowledge of residents' concerns, particularly residents whose voices aren't too infrequently heard here. And finally, I admire Joel's honesty, frankness, and decency. While I suppose these traits should be a minimum requirement for anyone in public office, they aren't always in evidence these days. My observation has been that Joel never says or does anything simply because it's expedient. He doesn't speak in generalities to avoid expressing an unpopular view or let political considerations influence his course of action. I'm going to miss him, and I think the entire Board will miss him. And I wish him all the best in whatever endeavors and challenges he decides to take on next.
Thank you.
Joel, I want to thank you too for your years of service. You have a talent and a gift for reaching out to the community that was evident before you became a trustee, and you used that to garner support for the stormwater issues on the west side of Willmet, and those residents will forever be grateful for your advocacy. And your advocacy continued when you became a trustee, and your outreach to the community was impressive. You also had a great involvement on the Public Safety Committee that you chaired, and that was evident for all of us. We really appreciate, I really appreciate your voice on the Board and making all of us think twice about what we were planning, what we were thinking, and always having that voice to make sure that we were listening to the community as you were. So I hope and I expect you to continue into public service because the community needs you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kersman, Joel, it's really been a pleasure working with you, and I'm really proud of the relationship that we've built. You know, when you were first elected four years ago, we didn't know each other. I think there was a lot of uncertainty of how we would get along, how you would get along with the staff. And I think, you know, one of your greatest accomplishments and one of our greatest accomplishments was building that trust and working collaboratively to get really great things done. I'll miss our Iced Tea Summits. Joel and I often got together at Starbucks to talk about a litany of issues and talk through whatever was on his mind or my mind. And those don't have to go by the wayside. We can keep doing that for sure. And I hope I don't lose my access to your homebrew because it was spectacular and valued. So really, I appreciate the honest and frank discussions that we have had, and you really should be proud of your accomplishments. There were many over the last four years. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Trustee Kersman, floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you very much for your kind comments. And Trustee Plunkett, President-elect Plunkett, congratulations on your election. And to all the trustees who were elected or reelected, I congratulate you. First and foremost, I would like to thank the residents of Willmet for this opportunity to serve. Whether it be my professional career or my short time volunteering here in the Village of Willmet, I always enjoy making public policy. I've worked with elected officials for over 20 years now, and it has been interesting to be an elected official, even if just for a short time. I would like to acknowledge and thank the Village staff. From top to bottom, the Village of Willmet is a strong, highly professional and well-run organization. While I believe most residents recognize this to be the case, it is always worth bearing repeating. I want to thank former Village Manager Tim Renzer and current Village Manager Mike Berman for the leadership and for working with me on invaluable resident requests. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I want to express respect and admiration for the Willmet Fire Department and the Willmet Police Department. In particular, I enjoyed the time I was able to spend with former Chief Ben Lozny while participating in the regional dispatch meetings, the Red Center. I also enjoyed working with Chief Kyle Burden, appreciating his engagements, his enjoyment of my interest to promote gun safety. What it comes down to is I was impressed with nearly everyone, but how can I not make specific mention of staff from the Department of Engineering and Public Works? I just want to express appreciation to Director Berger and Village Engineer Dan Dennis, not just for their excellent implementation of the neighborhood storage project, but for all of their work on the wide-ranging responsibilities related to streets and sanitation. The best part of being a trusted trustee is working with residents to solve the problems and to further perfect our community. I enjoyed getting out into the community, into the distinct neighborhoods of our village, where I appreciate the wide-ranging subcultures and communities that exist. Four years later, I knew more about the village than I would have ever expected when I moved here 16 years ago. My politics were the politics of necessity. I had no connections to anyone on the inside. I was just a guy who saw something that desperately needed to get done, and I wouldn't let it go until it was done. I have no love for the stormwater issue. In fact, I disliked it more than I can express in socially acceptable terms here. But stormwater got me going to Village Hall. It led me to understand that I can bring my public policy background to the village for any and all issues. With the implementation of the neighborhood storage project, a burden was lifted from my shoulders and from my psyche. And I loved being able to grapple with the needs of all residents from all neighborhoods on all issues. And I believe I made the most of the opportunity. I served as best I could, and I am proud of the results. While I may have worked on the stormwater issue, it became apparent in recent weeks that other people in the community did not. The surprise is not that I lost the election five weeks ago. The surprise is that I managed to get elected four years ago. It just wasn't supposed to happen. Apparently, my election upset some people, and I will hold that memory dear brother for a long time. I believe consensus is meaningful and becomes valuable when the marketplace of ideas is expansive and the discussion is inclusive. I continue to think diversity is a good thing, including diversity of thought. Having participation of diverse people from diverse neighborhoods is a good thing, should not be a threat. Perhaps another candidate will come along with that to build some legacy of stormwater advocacy, who can articulate these concepts more effectively than me. And I look forward to that. And that's why I believe the village of Willmet's best days are yet to come. In the meantime, I want to finish as I started and to congratulate all of the election winners and to wish them the very best of luck. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve.
Trustee Kersman, we have our standard Crystal Cave memento that I will have along to you here.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Kersman, and thanking Board members. To item 6.3, which is acknowledgement of the retirement of Village President Robert Polanski, which that's me. So again, we'll go through comments from the Board, and then I will make a few remarks as well. So. Bob? Okay, Trustee Plunkett, if you want to start.
I'm happy to start. I was going to have a joke where nobody said anything for a while. So Bob, it's hard to thank you enough for your dedication to Willmet, but anybody that knows anything about you knows how much you deeply care about this town. From driving around every neighborhood every time it rained to, and I don't want to steal something from your speech, but literally walking every street of this entire town during the pandemic. And I'm sure you've got an enlightened appreciation for Willmet from doing that. I just, I want to talk, I've got one anecdote. So Bob's preparation for the Village Board meetings was unparalleled, and I think it kept all of us on our toes to make sure that, you know, we were half as prepared as he was. But one specific thing that comes to mind was during the coal tar hearings. And we were in the process of banning coal tar sealants on our driveways. And somebody, a representative from the industry of coal tar, wanted to have a chance to speak at our meetings and provided hundreds of pages in defense of coal tar. Bob pored through those pages, coming up with a cross-examination of this man worthy of a courtroom drama. And he got him. And we, of course, passed the coal tar ban. But I just, I appreciate your guidance and your dedication, and Willmet appreciates so many years of service, so many hours of service, late nights and early mornings, that you sacrificed, that your family sacrificed. And so, thank you.
Well, President Polanski, I'm sure I'm going to echo a lot of the same comments that President-elect Plunkett just said, but I'm going to actually start with thanking, first off, your family. And I know Terry and your daughters Katie and Maggie have been a big supporter of yours. It's not easy to do what you've done the last eight years as President and prior to that as trustee. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of sacrifices. And I know they were right there supporting you, and I want to thank them because they were always right there. And it was always fun when your daughters would show up in the meetings and sit in the front row and encourage you. But thank you. I don't want to say Terry, but I'm sure the daughters are back there too. So thank you. President Polanski, you've done a great job. It is incredible that you came into the village almost 10 years ago, as we were coming out of the recession. And as I sit up here and look out at our business district and the development that's going on, you had the privilege of leaving this office and this village in a better shape than when you came in. And that's not, not many people can say that, but you persevered, and a lot of that was because you remained focused on the village. You were always thinking about what's right. You always got to the right answer, and it was always a good, healthy debate. And you showed great leadership, always tremendous leadership and compassion for the residents. And I know Willmet is better off, I'm better off serving with you. I learned a lot. It's made it very enjoyable. It's not easy to see you go, but I'm excited for this next step. But I do want to make sure I thank you, congratulate you. And really, you helped me do better. And I know you left this village in a better place. So congratulations and thank you.
I'm going to call Bob tonight because it's the last meeting, and President Polanski really doesn't do justice to the affection that I and all of the trustees feel for you. I want to first thank you. Thank you for all the contributions that you've made to the village. Dan just described all of them, and I know that the other trustees will too. So to thank you for appointing me to the Invitation Commission and encouraging me to become a trustee, however hesitant I might have been at the time. It's been an extraordinary experience serving on the Board with you, and it's one that I wish that every resident had the opportunity to do, to appreciate the workings of our village, the contributions of our staff. And I thank you for all that you've done for all of us here on the Board. I'd like all of us to try to think back eight years when you first began serving as Village President. Eight years ago, we were still recovering from the great pandemic. Village finances were very shaky. Reserves were low, budgets were cut. Think about where we are now. We've, through careful budgeting, prudent spending, careful capital raising, we are in extraordinarily strong mental position and can proceed with the downtown reconstruction, the infrastructure programs that are taking place all over the village. A good deal of the thanks for that has to go to the leadership of you, Bob. Think back eight years about Greenway Road. There was a large lot that was dirt for many years, and it eventually turned into grass. During that transition, it became the
During that period, it became the residential building of 611 Green Bay Road, a very successful development. And we're shortly be breaking ground on the optimal development, which will be one of the architectural gems of the North Shore. Think back eight years about what it was like to go out to dinner in Womet. We were hard-pressed to find good dining experiences. Look around now. Our dining experiences are the envy of our neighbors. Soon, there'll be another coffee shop that's opening, any barbecue restaurant that's open. And the resurgence of the restaurants, again, has occurred because of the leadership that you provided to us. And finally, think back eight years to what happened when we had two or three or four days of hard rain. Basements were flooded, streets were flooded, backyards were flooded. We're in the process now of completing that stormwater project after years of study, careful planning, careful financing, all done through your leadership, Bob. So, on behalf of this board, on behalf of all the other boards that you've served with, and on behalf of all the residents of Womet, thank you for your contribution. You've really moved Womet a far better place than when you joined this board eight years ago, and you have all of our thanks. Thank you, Peter.
Do you mind if I go last?
That's all right. I've heard that request, so. God, I requested to go last.
Okay.
I feel like I'm the least well-qualified in the group to talk about Bob, since I'm the most junior member of the board with the least experience with village government. And I will remain so for at least a few minutes more. But in my short tenure, I have come to deeply appreciate the difficulty of the job Bob has had to do as president over the last eight years. And as a trustee before that, I've been impressed with the hard work, effort, careful thought, and grace that Bob has always brought to these tasks. In addition to all of the usual economic ups and downs, unexpected bumps in the road, and run-of-the-mill controversies that every village board president and trustee has to face, Bob began his tenure as we were trying to recover from the worst financial downturn since the Great Depression, and more recently is ending his tenure with the worst pandemic in over 100 years. Congratulations, Bob! Through this, he has persevered with the sanity and equanimity and sense of humor intact, which is remarkable, that the village has come through in sound financial shape with the largest infrastructure project ever undertaken nearing completion and ready to tackle the numerous challenges that lie ahead. It's nothing short of a miracle. Another miracle, in my opinion, is that Bob seemed at all times to really, really enjoy what he was doing. He always had a smile, he always saw the humor in the situation, if that was at all possible. It sounds like a cliche, but I do believe that one of the very best qualities one can bring to a job, particularly a difficult one, is a genuine and passionate love for the task. And this is something that Bob has by the bucket full. It has served him well, it has served the village well, and it has served the residents well. Thank you, Bob, and thanks too to your family, who undoubtedly have had to put up with an awful lot over these years. We'll miss you, and whatever you do next, we all wish you the very best.
Yeah, thank you. I feel obligated to disagree with you, Bob, on your last day at office. And only to say that I don't think we disagreed that much. And I have deep respect for all of your contributions to the village. I think you've done a great job in your eight years. I think you made the most of it. I think Dan pointed out very aptly the positive change in the community. And, you know, if there were times that we disagreed, you know, I never, I never tried to pile on if ever you missed out, and that wasn't very often. But I wish you the best, and I really do thank you for your service to the community. Thank you, Jill. For your request.
Thank you. Bob, I'm not going to repeat everything everybody said in terms of just thanking you. You've been an inspiration to all of us and thanking your family. So what I decided to do instead was I'm going to read an ode to President Robert Polinsky. "It all started in 2011, a young Wometian barely 47. He won with strong financial management as his motto, and then quickly became an election aficionado. He served for two years as a trustee with vision of a presidency in his future he could only foresee. In 2013, he ran for village president and won the vote of most Womet residents. His successes are far-reaching and everlasting, first and foremost making Womet very attracting. He started his work with a sound financial plan and soon showed he was an incredibly smart and conscientious man. One of his first successes was the redevelopment of the old Ford site, which was vigorously debated because of its height. Soon after, parts of the community struggled with basement flooding, creating a mess. A West Park sanitary sewer project quickly relieved the smell and resident stress. And then came the storm flooding that never seemed to end, but a stormwater solution led the board to recommend. We strive to maintain village services that were top-notch. All were successful thanks to his careful watch. Wometanomics brought people to shop local, encouraging people to come downtown to dine, drink, and be social. He mastered running the board with only one minor blip, which is incredible after eight years, this was his only slip. In 2017, he promised me a trustee works only a few hours each week, but once elected, we entered our busiest street. His biggest strength was keeping our village on strong financial ground, and let me say, budget, budget, budget was his favorite sound. In his last year, COVID was one of the hardest issues to tackle, but thanks to our strong reserves, my favorite, we survived the battle. In closing, Bob, I want to thank you for being creative, balanced, and diligent, to name just a few. We've all appreciate your strong leadership. You've left us ready and prepared to steer our own ship. Thank you, Bob. And I hope that wasn't too lighthearted, but I just...
Not at all. I'm a tough act to follow, and tonight I have to follow a rhyming word, which is hard, you know?
So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hard to follow that. Thank you, Trustee Dodd. So I've had the pleasure of working with President Polinsky for almost the entirety of his term, most of it as the Assistant Village Manager and my first year as the Village Manager. The Village Manager-Village President relationship is truly a special relationship, and it's got to be right for things to move in the right direction for the community to benefit the way it should. And I know Bob and Tim had that, and I know absolutely for certain that Bob and I had that. And so much of that had to do with Bob's leadership and his approach, the steadiness that he brought to the job, and the fact that there was no agenda here. You know, we weren't always trying to chase a certain point of view or a certain agenda. We were trying to do what was best for the community. And that's because that's what Bob wanted. You know, when I was reflecting back today, you know, what really was so valuable to Bob's leadership from a staff perspective was his respect of the council manager form of government. He understood it, he valued it, but he also promoted it, and he set the tone. And he ensured that elected officials stayed in their lane and staff stayed in their lane. And that's why we're able to provide the top-notch services that we are here, that really are the envy of many other communities in Illinois. And, you know, Bob, as a leader and as the president, always listened to the staff, and he listened to the board members, and welcomed dissent, and was thoughtful when we would disagree or suggest a different path, and would often change his mind, and other times would not. And generally, he was always right. And we really valued that give and take. And the tone that Bob and the rest of the board here sets is why we're able to attract and retain such excellent staff and why Womet is such a great place to work. So Bob, thank you very much. It's been a true pleasure and joy, and a great first year for me as village manager.
So first off, well, thank you to all the trustees and to Mike for their kind words. And it feels sort of odd with a prepared speech here, but that's sort of the way these things go. So for the past eight years, it has been my honor and my privilege to serve as your village president. And in my final remarks, I'm going to thank the many people who supported me during my time in office, reflect on some of the accomplishments, which some of the trustees have already mentioned, and offer some thoughts on our village government. So I don't think my family expected me thanked four times. I know they expected me thanked by me. But first and foremost, I do thank my family, especially my wife and my two daughters, who have shared their husband and father with the community, the many occasions when a village-related commitment has taken me away from home. And without their impending support, my service would not have been possible. I thank the residents of Womet for entrusting the responsibilities of the office. And I thank the business owners, who have chosen to invest their time and money, as well as their hearts and souls in our community. My sole motivation as village president has been making Womet a better place to live, work, raise a family, and retire for all of them. I thank my current and former colleagues who served on the board with me. Without their work, the accomplishments of the past eight years would not have been possible. And additionally, many residents who volunteer on our boards and commissions, and they play a very important role in village government as well. So I thank them for that. I also thank the former members of the village board, whom I did not serve, but whose interest in bringing service did not end with their tenure on the board. I thank the former village presidents, Chris Canning, T. Ken Fox, Susan Jacoby, and Vern Squires, for their friendship, their advice, and their support. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the staff for their conscientiousness and hard work. As a person of the village, we're thankful for the volunteers, and it's the stuff that gets done, and the staff that provides the services which makes Womet a wonderful place to live. The staff is dedicated to our community, and during the pandemic, that was fully on display. I'd especially like to thank the former two village managers, with their service to the friends that are here tonight as well, and Mike Berman for their leadership and their tireless efforts. We appreciate Womet to have this village staff. Second, our development has been a priority since the end of the Great Recession. Beginning in 2013, the village experienced a renaissance in restaurants in downtown Womet. And now, we're proud of our downtown as it is a pre-coming dining destination on the North Shore. Many of the trustees I mentioned have attracted significant staff from the smaller community, the redevelopment of the ownership site, a new apartment building, a facility on Ridge Road, the hotel that we have in the East Expressway. And we've also afforded affordable housing development on Womet Ave, an adaptive reuse of the Masonic Lodge on Central Ave, and mixed-use development at the corner of Central Ave and Green Bay Road. That is the optimal project that's been referred to. These developments and our new restaurants, they enhance all residents' home values because they make Womet a more vibrant community. And vibrant community is what's attractive to young families moving up from the city to the suburbs. Economic development also generates sales taxes, and growing the tax base helps share the costs of our local government and our schools. The village's municipal services, and over the past eight years, that's been a firmly focus as well. And the village board has approved funding for several critical infrastructure programs. The sewer system improvements include a forementioned West Park Sanitary Sewer Project and the Neighborhood Storage Project for Stormwater. And while new construction projects on Locust, Central, and at Hibbert and Skokie Boulevard were largely funded by state and federal grants, the project also significantly increased our annual investment in our road maintenance program. And finally, the financial position of the village is very strong today, despite the pandemic and despite growing uncertainty both at the state and the federal level. Further budgeting, diligent cost management, and a focus by the village staff on efficiency has allowed us to continue to deliver quality services in a cost-effective manner. And really, a testament to our financial strength is the fact that we've been able to maintain our AAA credit rating, which, by the way, is not a real, it's not a real easy task for your community located in Illinois. So there are just the projects and initiatives that I want to mention just quickly, the restoration of the dunes, Music on the Green Concert Series, our bike and active transportation plan, our environmental initiatives, including the ban on coal tar sealants and the adoption of the Greys Region Compact. We've also pursued new affordable housing initiatives, and we've made significant progress there as well. Now, many of you have heard me say, when I've been speaking in front of groups, that I like to think of village government as a service organization. Village government exists to provide those critical municipal services that our residents rely on every day. And government works well in Womet, and our residents have told us so. A few years ago, the village conducted two surveys of residents, which included a question about whether the village was on the right track or the wrong track. And of the people who had expressed the opinion, they said either right or wrong, 83% said we were on the right track. In one of those surveys, the same question was asked about Cook County, and only 26% thought Cook County was on the right track. So we weren't being graded on a curve. These were people who were very thoughtful there. A combined 91% of residents rated the village services as either good or excellent. And I cite these stats not in any sort of self-congratulatory way, but rather to say to the village board and the staff to be confident in the decisions what they've made. Residents have continued to validate the path which village government has taken. You know, of course, always root for improvement, but please take the heart that I believe that our residents are very happy with their local government. I often get the question, why does village government work so well when many of the levels of government in our country seem dysfunctional or worse? Let me share some quick thoughts, and I promise I'm wrapping up. So first off, you know, our elected officials are independents. And I remember how refreshing that was when I joined the board. And in general, you know, we're not very political people. If you spend your evenings watching cable news, you're way more political than the average village trustee. The staff's very important here. They focus our decision-making on facts and on data, not on the politics or on anecdotes. We're careful with residents' tax dollars, but we also get things done. We're very results-oriented at the village government level, and that's, those are the reasons why I think village government works well in Womet. So in closing, I wish all the best to President Robert Polinsky and the members of the village board. Womet is truly in good hands. And for one last time as village president, I thank you all for your attention, and I wish you all well.
Before we move on, we have our standard keepsake. I have one other item for you. So we felt your last communicator message was really a great summary of the accomplishments of the past eight years, so we framed it for you with your term as trustee and president.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Thank you.
I don't have a place to put it. I mean, on the table. I have a place already in mine at home, but...
Yeah, I'll put it back so it doesn't break down.
Okay, that's a good idea. All right, so let's move on to the real business of the night here. Item 6.4 is Administration of Over of Office to Trustee-Elect Kathy Dodd. Kathy, if you would, I believe the Xs on the floor are the range of the cameras. So if you would... And I think, bring your microphone, Kathy. Oh, and we're going to stand at the other mic, okay.
I think Stacy's going to land it.
Oh, you should probably cheer again.
All right, Trustee Dodd, if you'll repeat after me. I?
I.
State your name.
Kathy Dodd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
The charters, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, item 6.5 is Administration of Over of Office to Trustee-Elect Kate Jaya. Kate?
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kate Jaya.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item six point six is administration of oath of office to trustee-elect Justin Shepherd. Justin?
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Justin Shepherd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
The charters, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And then item six point seven is administration of oath of office to village president-elect Santa Plunkett.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Santa Plunkett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Womet.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as village president.
The duties of my office as village president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Also, I want to thank you for the record that that was Mr. Berman's first time swearing, village board member, so I think he did a very nice job as well. All right, it's getting cold out, so... The last item I need to do is item seven, adjourn, sign die. So as you know, this is the last meeting as village president, and for the last time, I will adjourn a meeting of the village board. Seni di is Latin for without a day, and in this case, adjourn without a day for resumption, which means, again, the final adjournment of this village board. Now, in order to use the proper Latin pronunciation, instead legislators say, sunny die. So apologies to my high school Latin teacher. Trustee Korsman, adjourn, sign die. Go move. And president, I'm going to have a second.
Second.
Which are outdoors, and I believe I can do just a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are the link proposed? Let's see if you can adjourn and sign die. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Meeting will please come to order. At our last meeting, former President Blinsky explained all the process for tonight, and in the interest of the cold, I will not go through much of that. We have an agenda for our second meeting, and we will call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda. We will start with the roll call. The village, please call the roll.
Trustee Jaya.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Shepherd.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
And President Plunkett.
Here. We're all here, we have a forum. Next item on the agenda is item number two, public comment. During public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the board on matters which are on tonight's agenda when a particular matter is called. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda? I don't see any hands. Any members of the board like to address? No, sorry about that. Item number three is the consent agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are normally not debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. All items beginning with the three are on the consent agenda tonight. The consent agenda consists of items three point one through three point one four. They are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved. Is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Don't see any show of hand. Any members of the board that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? I'm seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could the clerk please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Trustee Jaya.
Yeah.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Aye. The motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the consent agenda, it has been approved. Now we go to item number four, which is the report of officers. And I am going to use this opportunity to say a couple brief comments. I'm so happy that we can all be here in person tonight. Already, there's been so much camaraderie, and it's so great to see people's faces. And we are looking forward to in-person meetings very soon. I'm very excited to move forward in this position. It's a great time to be in Womet. We're moving out from the pandemic, looking toward Womet's one hundred and fifty-fiftieth birthday celebration next year, and we are more resilient than ever. I look forward to working with all of the wonderful residents in our village. This is a fantastic place, and I promise you and pledge to you that I will work my hardest. I look forward to working with the staff. We are so fortunate in Womet to have such talented and dedicated village staff. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with them in my past six years, and I look forward to a great future. And I'm privileged to work with this fantastic board. I know how hard each of these individuals have worked and will continue to work to make Womet a better place. On a personal note, I want to thank my family for their support and understanding. And I also would like to honor someone who could not be with me tonight. My mom was my biggest fan, and in her words, she would have been tickled pink to see me being sworn in tonight. She was a true pioneer and achieved success despite some incredible odds. She taught me the values of independence, hard work, and acceptance. She taught me the values of independence, hard work, and acceptance. She was so excited for my campaign for trustee two years ago, and was always trying to, not so subtly, encourage me and nudge me to run for village president. I think she had a pretty good idea before she passed that I was going to go for it. And now, with the one-year anniversary of her death having occurred this Mother's Day, I know she's been with me all along. Thank you. Moving to item four point one. Time this. The approval of point, of the appointment of Peter H. Barrow to the office of village trustee to fill the unexpired term of trustee Santa Plunkett. Um, I'm thrilled to be recommending Peter Barrow, uh, for this appointment. Do I have a motion, uh... Do I have a... Excuse me. Uh, do I have a motion to approve Peter H. Barrow to the office of village trustee for the two-year term?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could the village clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Trustee Jaya. Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Aye. Congratulations, Peter. Item four point two, the administration of the oath of office to Peter H. Barrow.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Peter H. Barrow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter, Laws, and Ordinances of the Village of Womet.
The Charter, Law, and Ordinances of the Village of Womet.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
The duties of my office as village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item four point three, approval of the recommendation of the village board committee assignments. Is there a motion to approve the village board standing committee assignments?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Jaya. Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Aye. Motion has been approved, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if we have any reports from our village manager, Mr. Bremen, or our corporate, corporation counsel, Mr. Stein.
Very briefly, I just want to restate that we're going to return to remote meetings via Microsoft Teams after this evening, and then targeting in mid to late June, return to in-person meetings in our council chambers. And I'd also like to thank and acknowledge the staff who helped pull this off. We've never had an outdoor meeting, and it seems to be going very well. So thank you to our specific team, John, Mike, and Kevin, Charles, Peter, Skiles, and Karen, it's been excellent, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is item four point four, which is the proclamation designating May sixteenth to the twenty-second as Public Works Week. And I will now read the proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the citizens of Womet. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Womet to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas the year 2021 marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Santa Plunkett, president of the Village of Womet, do hereby proclaim the week of May sixteenth to the twenty-second, 2021, as Public Works Week in the Village of Womet. Urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Our public works, our water department, they are truly second to none, and we are truly fortunate in Womet to have them. Thank you. And four point five is a proclamation recognizing May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I'm thrilled to be making this proclamation, and I want to thank the Human Relations Commission. At their April twenty-ninth meeting, they voted unanimously in favor of recognizing the 2021 Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in May. This is a very important proclamation that we're making, and we're proud to be doing this for the first time this year. Whereas in nineteen ninety, the first Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was designated by presidential proclamation, and in nineteen ninety-two, Congress permanently designated May of each year as a month-long celebration that is now, that is known now as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese immigrants to the United States in eighteen forty-three, and the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in eighteen sixty-nine. Whereas people of Asian heritage now comprise over twelve percent of the village's population and have made valuable contributions to the growth of the United States and their local communities, and it is critically important that we recognize their accomplishments. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month information and resources can be found at asianpacificheritage.gov, and Asian and Pacific Islander Americans continue to enrich our nation's economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments. Now therefore, I, Santa Plunkett, village president of Womet, Illinois, proclaim May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and call upon all people of Womet, Illinois to learn more about those of Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage and to celebrate this month with appropriate programs and activities. Thank you. The next on the agenda is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, that's me. There is no report. Um, next we are on to our standing committee reports. Um, the land just standing committee report, trustee Barrow.
No report, Madam President.
The finance standing report, trustee Kennedy.
No report.
The administration standing committee report, trustee Dodd.
All items were on consent.
The municipal services standing committee report, trustee Sullivan.
No report.
The public safety report, trustee Shepherd.
No report.
And the judiciary standing committee report, trustee Jaya.
No.
There are no reports from special committees, is there any new business, any items for new business? Seeing none, we shall now move for adjournment. Trustee Jaya, will you please move to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes. Trustee Shepherd, will you second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, everybody.